Okay, all right. And is that time, is that time extensive? I mean, is there a lot involved in that? Depends, I guess with COVID it's hard to say, right?
No. No.
Okay.
I could serve on.
Andrea, I think. What's that?
That was a bad statement. Did Jack that?
Okay.
I had time.
Andrea, I know you make a road trip, right?
Yeah, I'm in, my day job is in Newport News and I'm Chesapeake Bay Governor's School. So Richmond would be.
Yeah, opposite. Okay, how about you Kristen? What are you?
Currently, I'm the only one not.
Oh wow, she just got ball and told.
Yeah, I know. I emailed about it, so I'd be happy to, you know, to, to.
I mean, I, I think you're already in Richmond too, a lot of the time, right?
Right.
I will tell you, it's a new director and quite a few new board members. And so this is a great time in January for there to be a change because there are going to be some new faces on the board. With school districts that had elections in November. So if there's anything, whichever, Sarah, whichever one of you guys.
You can be backup Sarah, you can be secondary or backup.
So Ms. Swiffer would be primary and then this part would be a backup. It could be.
That works.
Board agree with that? Okay, it doesn't require action, we just need to.
Yeah.
Ms. Swiffer, I will send you the information for the next board meeting, the contact with the director tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
The next board meeting is not tomorrow, next board meeting is not until January 21st. We have time on that, but I'll get you all the information tomorrow. Okay?
Thank you.
That's it?
Uh, next up is return to learn.
All right, so I'm gonna invite our principals, our elementary principals to the table. That way they don't have to shout from back in the.
Oh my gosh. She don't have to leave.
They can have a seat at the table.
So you will see a change in title. So in my teacher advisory, I was advised, and advisory is what happens, that we never stop learning, so we're not returning to learn, but we are returning to in-person learning. So in honor of that and great point, that learning has continued in some way, shape or form. And our staff continues to do a phenomenal job, whether it's virtual, in-person, or a mix of the two. So return to in-person learning update tonight for you. So this slide starts every one of our presentations, it's how we make our decisions. Regional and county health metrics, our staffing, whether students are choosing in-person or virtual, and the current health of students and staff in our schools, how are we doing with quarantines and so forth. So. This chart I have shown before, this is the CDC's decision-making tool for schools. I have heard it will undergo some revisions as continues to happen during this process. But what they want you to look at are your number of new cases per 100,000. Is it green, yellow, orange, or red? The percent of PCR tests in the past 14 days? And then your ability of, as a school, to implement these five key mitigation strategies. Use of mask, social distancing, hygiene, cleaning, disinfection, and your ability to contact trace. So it's a multifaceted decision-making tool. Right now, on the part that we completely control, which is the five key mitigation strategies, we are in that green area. I would put us in the lighter green because of the work consistent. So making sure that we're consistent. So between that dark green and light green with our work, we're getting better and we're getting more consistent. So I feel good about the work that we're doing. But the other two of the three are outside of our control. So let me show you those, most of the data. So this is data from the Virginia Department of Health dated Friday. I believe that's Friday, somewhere around last week. Total number of new cases, so that is in that red zone at 317. Anything over 200 is red in the current chart. And percentage of PCR tests is at 6.9%. So that's in yellow. So you have a red, you have a yellow, and then you have a green as far as the CDC decision-making tool. Another indicator that we use is student and staff health data. So this is a chart I presented to you last time, and a chart we continue to update. This data is as of Friday on my chart. Student numbers, I said this before and say it again. These are students that we interact with either through athletics, internet access, or in-person learning. Parks and Rec could be another way that we interact with kids. So I wouldn't say this student data is entirely accurate. Because if you're just a virtual student and you've tested positive, we may not know. Just the nature of, of the medical piece. So far since September 8th, we've had 19 positive tests. And 88 students in quarantine. On the staff side of things, since August 24th, why are the dates different? Kids started September 8th, staff started until August 24th. 10 positives and really, most of the work we do is around quarantine. So, and we quarantine if somebody has come in contact with somebody that has been positive, they've had an exposure. So 101, I do believe that has gone up by eight across the weekend, so we're at about 109 with staff in quarantine. And this is a work session, so feel free to ask questions and interrupt in between, you don't have to save it.
So I have a question. The age, will they not give us a number of people under the age of 18 for this area?
I could, I could work with them on that.
Even though it might not be exactly representative due to homeschool and kids that don't necessarily go to the public schools here, I think that if we were able to get that data, it would, it would be pretty close to.
We meet with the health department every other week, this is our week to meet with them. So I'll send that question to them and make sure we have the answer. I think we meet with them on Thursday. So I have our elementary principals here because we're talking about the next cohort. But I wanted to make sure that you heard from them, not only successes, they've done a phenomenal job of making things happen in our school, but also some of the challenges that we have related to trying to scale this piece up. So either one wants to start in any order. And I told them, be real about the work that we're doing, the difficulties we have, the great things that are happening, and then be ready for any questions in between. So they make it happen every day with their staff, so it's important to kind of get their voice at the table.
Since Russ and I are gonna present two different sides of the picture, I think today.
Am I not a positive person?
No, 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 it's, maybe that came out. You know, in my building, I'll put it this way, we've been fortunate, everything has gone well. I'm sure everything has gone well with Russ and instruction, but as far as staff coming in the building, staff being able to stay in the building, we've been very fortunate with that.
I found this on the web.
They did.
All right, successes in kindergarten first, instruction's going well. And again, we're doing well, the kids come in, they get breakfast off the bus, they go to their classes, they get their temperatures taken. The routine is they, basically, we're still following that virtual schedule that the board has. That's gonna have to change for us and for Watkins, I imagine, as well. Because if we bring two and three back, I'll then have three classes, three grade levels trying to go to lunch at once and maintain social distance, et cetera, et cetera. So we'll have to do some schedule adjustments, but I don't think that'll be problematic, we're gonna work on that tomorrow. And overall, with in-person, it's going well, still going well, virtual. The challenge is coming back, the biggest challenge I see right now is if we come back and everybody stays healthy and there are no quarantines or anything like that, just all of my grade levels, both second and third, third shook out pretty well with the virtual break. In third grade, I've got 64 in-person, which gives me 16 to a class, and I've got 18 in two classes in virtual. So those are good sizes. The one issue I have with sort of crowding and meeting the mitigations is in second grade. For those of you that haven't visited my building, you know all the rooms aren't equal in size. And so even with switching out in rooms, I maxed out at 20 in two classes in-person and 21 in the other, in meeting those mitigations. So right now, I'm pretty much at my max. If somebody walked in and said, I need virtual, I need in-person in second, I'm not, I couldn't do it and meet the mitigations. Virtual, the classes in second grade are still low, they're 15 each. So for those two grade levels, looking pretty good going forward. Fourth grade and fifth grade are the same, I'm able, my numbers aren't that large. I have 16 in fourth grade in-person. Virtual classes got a little high at 23 and 24 in fourth grade. And in fifth grade, we've got 18 in in-person classes and 16 and 17 in virtual. So those grade levels worked out very well, it was a good split. So we've been fortunate in that. And our sped, you know, if the, it depends on who chooses what, but you could be in a bind with, if you had 50% of somebody's caseload virtual, 50% in-person, makes it very hard to teach. That has broken well for us. So we've been fortunate in the choices, you know, how it shook out. Challenges moving forward, I think, just maintaining what we're doing in light of what's going on. I know Russ is gonna say something a little different, but I, he and I talk quite a bit, and I'm just feeling very fortunate that we're able to do what we're doing. And I think that's the main challenge moving forward, is to stay with what we have.
What is morale like right now for the teachers?
You know, it seems good. You know, there's, they're anxious, they're a little stressed, but the folks that are teaching in-person, they're doing it and doing it well. I mean, their questions aren't, to me, you know, I'm worried, that sort of thing. They're, how do we get lunch done quicker? How do we, because the kids have to go to lunch, then they have to bring lunch back to class. And so, you know, we're working just through logistics. Most of their questions are on logistics. Some of the conversations have been on remediation and math and, you know, just sort of the normal day-to-day things you talk about. But nothing, I think morale is good.
But those logistics, or has it been considered to, you know, for lunches and things, to have lunches delivered to the classroom? Has that been something that?
We've discussed that with, with Leslie. And we ended up trying it the way we're doing it, just because we seem to have more personnel than this kitchen does. And she said she would be willing to try it if we pulled our aides to deliver the lunches. And that's something we may look at as the next two grade levels come in.
I just found that in my work, that we ended up switching to doing that. And it seemed to work. We had to get some things like carts and things like that, I'm sure that Karen's money would allow for that.
And Mr. Moncrief mentioned that the scheduling piece will be, you know, right now we're 9 to 1:30. As we bring more kids back, that time is gonna need to expand for a number of reasons. For lunches, for transportation, for instruction, those different pieces. So we just, we'll be flexible with that, continue to communicate with families. On our surveys, we kept the same time, but knowing that that's gonna, we can't run K-12, even K-5 at the same times we're running now, at half-capacity on buses and so forth. So we're really kind of building this as we go.
So Mr. Moncrief, tell us how the children, the students are adjusting with wearing masks. Has that been better than anticipated?
It's much better than anticipated. We have kids in our pre-K program that are masked up and stay masked. I mean, I, I'm usually pretty, I'm very impressed with what the kids are doing. You know, I may walk out of my office and forget my mask. But we've got first graders that are up and got it, you know. So I think they're doing very well. And they're doing well with the mitigations, you know, the teachers saw something up in Hanover with one of the schools we visited called Zombie Arms. And the kids, you know, kind of stick their arms out and doing that. I think the kids are doing well. And it's good to have them there, I'll be honest with you.
Who would've thought zombies would be a good thing? Kind of mitigation strategy.
So Mr. Moncrief and Alana, Mr. Mackel's, the comment on this as well. Now that we're into this thing long enough, have you been able to, with the teachers, determine some of the, some of the gaps that you're seeing now? And how are you, I know you said something about, you know, being able to work with some of these other students. Has that really raised its head already that you've seen, how did you fill in some of these gaps for the education since we've been out of school for so long?
We're, I think, I think in the virtual, and I, I think our teachers have done a really good job, I'll say that. But I think it's sort of the Matthew effect. And, you know, it's a verse from the Bible, I can't remember the exact verse, but basically it says, for those who have more, they're gonna get more. For those who don't have as much, they're gonna lose it. And that's very true. I mean, I first read that in reading instruction, and I think it's true in virtual learning. If you've got the setup and you've got the support, it works really well. If you don't, you're just getting farther behind. And I think for those kids, fortunately, a lot of those kids are the kids that are coming in. And we are, we're glad to have them back. Yes.
I think a lot of the pals testing data and the mask screeners that we've done, actually, we've kind of been pleasantly surprised at the results that they've had, so there hasn't been that much of a regression. I'd be foolish to say there hasn't been any regression at all, but we have been pleasantly surprised with kind of the baseline that they're at. The concern now is moving them forward and having that consistency, especially in the small group, which you still have difficulty now, even with smaller class sizes, having that ability just to, to actually just be able to read with them for an extended period of time. It is, it's a condensed day, so you, there's not a whole lot of time for a lot of leeway to not really be on task. So that, that's made it a little bit difficult. But I mean, I'll just go into our successes, I think the greatest success is having kids back in the building. It's, it's really nice to have, have the kids back, they've done phenomenally well. As John said, whether it's mitigation or just, they're, they're happy to be there, and we're happy to have them there. And it's just, it gives a whole different vibe just walking in that part of the building, being able to have kids in-person. I think they've hit the ground running, especially the kindergartners, you would, you would've thought that they'd been in for, for months. And they just, they're enthused when they get off the bus and from the minute they're there to the, to the time they leave. Other successes, the teachers have just, teachers and the parapros have been phenomenal. We've called on our parapros to do more than they've ever had to do before. We have, every one of our special ed parapros works with virtual groups. If they're not working with in-person students, either one-to-one or small group. They have groups every single day virtually. They're covering classes. The kids have a difficult time really identifying between the parapro and the teacher, or so they consider both of them the teacher, which is really the model you want in a collaborative setting. So I gotta give them all the credit, and they've been so flexible and done whatever we've asked of them, because we've asked them to do a lot more, especially in instructional role than maybe we've had in the past. The challenges have been, we had a great, you know, couple of weeks to start. Last few weeks, we've hit some speed bumps. You know, we have two first-grade classes that are still quarantined as of right now. Two Mondays ago, I walked in, I checked my phone every morning, I'm kind of scared to death to look at it. But I checked my emails and my texts, and I had 11 staff members who couldn't come in the building. And it was just the mad scramble of getting people to cover, we just didn't have enough people to cover. Because of course substitutes are an issue also. And I, I'm just speaking, just talking out loud, you know, a lot of your subs and sublists are retired teachers, and so they might be a little bit older. And there's that fear factor that they don't want to be in a building and exposed to kids, so it's making acquiring subs even more difficult. So we've had to pull a lot of the parapros to cover those classes, which has really been difficult. Because we want to keep the kids safe, we want to keep the staff safe. So that's, that's kind of our, my biggest challenge right now. It's not the mitigation strategies, the kids have done a great job with masks, hand sanitizers. Try to keep them six feet apart, but it is like herding cats, you know, when they're five and six. It is difficult because they, you know, they, they move a lot. But some of the challenges we have is, is my fear is, do I have enough staff to cover when more kids come into the building? We are still running internet access as well, paraprofessionals and bus drive would utilize in that. So having to pull them to cover classes, and what Mr. Mack says, he has 11 teachers, those are teachers that want to be here, but they're in quarantine or they have a medical issue, or, I mean, it's just, that's a legitimate concern as far as just being able to staff a school. Yeah, we've nine, between kindergarten and first grade, I have nine in-person teachers. We had, we had a couple of days in a row, where only three out of those nine teachers were even in the building. So we were pulling resource and parapros, which then impacted the online access centers. But they, nobody complains, they put their head down, they do what you're asking them to do, and you just keep moving forward. For my second grade and third grade, you know, some of the other concerns that come up, and I think I just discussed them at one of the meetings. When we bring, if we bring second grade, I'll have 33 students that will have to change teachers. My third grade, I've got 32 students that will have to change teachers based on the virtual or in-person switch. My class sizes really aren't too bad. But with that being said, for third grade, well, for second grade, we'd be looking at 16 students apiece, and the virtual would be a little bit on the high end, but it'd be about 25, it would be about the maximum. Third grade, I have six people on that team, one virtual. What would have to happen is, we would be able to keep 25 of them, but then the rest of the students that are selected virtual would actually be with a teacher from New Kent Elementary. So we've, we've also tried to partner that way, so that this coverage, so your in-person classes aren't too large, as well as your virtual classes not being too large. And that came up, and I have a slide in a minute to show you that, that came up as a concern at our last meeting. We had 31 kids in a virtual class. And Russ and John went back and kind of worked that, how can we shift this internally? So that you can have a second grade virtual teacher or third grade, it just may not be a GW teacher. So that's one of the pieces as far as running a virtual school. You have a certified teacher, it just may not be your, your, your actual homeschool. So lots, lots of shifts and sacrifices and really being innovative and creative, so, which is a challenge.
So question about the positive cases they've had. During the contact tracing, were we able to find out whether any of that spread or those positive cases were because they contracted in the building from another person that was positive? Or were they all found to have been contracted externally through home or?
Everything we've had has been outside, outside of the building, not personally. Staff has done a really good job about maintaining their distance, their mask and those four. And that, that's something we've gotten a lot better at. I don't know that I would've said in August, we are on it, we do, you know. But they, they really have done a good job. So our cases, as we traced them, we traced them back to an external factor or, or person, not related at this point. Not to say that that won't happen at some piece, but both schools have done a great job of that.
When we have a child or teacher that's in a classroom, test positive, are the rest of the students and the teacher, whoever is not known to be positive, are they then going and getting tested?
They are being quarantined, we can't mandate the testing piece for students.
But do we know if they are? I mean, are, are we encouraging it, are we?
So our lead nurse does run that for us in conjunction with, so the help, they get a phone call from us, either at the school level or our lead nurse, but they also get a phone call from the Chickahomish Health Department saying, okay, you know, you've had a potential exposure. And so they are given that guidance on, on a couple of occasions.
And we don't really know whether or not they're actually tested.
But they are out for that 14-day period, so. What we've actually seen an increase in, even today and last week, were parents who've called, who, I don't want to say self-quarantining, were quarantining their children because dad was exposed at work and is now tested positive, so they, which we greatly appreciate, you know, them making, making that phone call and saying, I don't feel comfortable sending my child, my, you know, my spouse has it. And so that is what we've started to now see an increase, which we weren't seeing two, two weeks.
And how are you, how are you quickly navigating that? Is the child then automatically switched to a virtual class? Or are they just sick, like a, like an absent?
If it's not, if it's not for a really extended period of time, which one of them happened to be today, then we can get that work from their current in-person teacher, and they can send that work home. If not, if it's something that's over an extended period of time, you know, two weeks or such, then we're gonna try to add them to a virtual setting. You know, with this post-cohort being in, that's new territory for us, and trying to find as seamless as possible a shift, depending on the circumstances. I would also say, and this Mac can add to this too, we did have to quarantine two classes. We've been very upfront that, you know, this can and will happen as we bring kids back. There's just no way around it that, that our families really received that message. And for the most part, we're very understanding about the quarantine. Not 100%, but. For the most part.
They understand.
So, so there are some challenges with it. And we continue to kind of work, work through those pieces. So some of this, both principals that have talked about, these were the survey data that I showed you last time. I circled the 31 because that was a point of contention with third grade at George Watkins, because that would've been 31 kids in a virtual class. So let's, we go to the next slide.
36 in elementary, at New Kent Elementary.
What's that? So New Kent Elementary had 36 with two teachers.
Two teachers, okay.
So that's why I'm showing the next slide, GW only had one. So New Kent was gonna be sitting at 15 or 16, and George Watkins would probably be sitting at 31. So what you see, so that GW will be somewhere between 23, 25, depending on how that class shakes out. So 25, we're using as some sort of a quasi-max, not wanting to go past that number. But that would mean, I think, eight or so kids from George Watkins would actually be taught by Duke Elementary virtual teacher. Does that make sense? So that was one of the adjustments that was made to try to get the class sizes where we would need it to be. As we look at the fourth grade data, we do have another big bubble specifically at George Watkins that we would have to kind of work through. That's more of an in-person one, and it's really gonna come down to a space piece, but we're, we're looking at that as well. So here's where we are, cohort one is in, cohort two is also in, you can see those dates. What we're talking about tonight is grades two and three. So I have a proposed date to look at that, and that is January 19th. Why January 19th? That is two weeks coming back from the holiday break. So in those two weeks, knowing what we've seen in the two weeks since Thanksgiving break, trying to come back on this, on the 4th or the 11th, may be difficult for us. We'd rather get a read on it that first week and try to prepare for January 19th. From a logistics standpoint, Mervin and his team has done a tremendous job on, on the routing, getting us ready for that. So on the logistics side, we're ready, the schools are forming classes and so forth. We wouldn't communicate the new classes until we came back. But it would also give us the opportunity, when we come back, to see where our health data is. And to see what our quarantines are and gives, buys us a little bit of time limit. So that would be the proposal we will bring to you tonight. But more than happy to kind of talk through additional questions, rationale behind any of that.
So Monday, January 18th is a holiday?
Monday, January 18th is a holiday. So initially I had the 18th on there and realized that that's a holiday and we're closed, so it would actually be the 19th.
I think it's March, I suppose, not, to two weeks after, because there's just more process.
So what would be the game plan in moving forward for the potential, if all goes well, fourth and fifth, and then sixth to 12? How far apart do you potentially see them if, if the data and the metrics is acceptable? What would be your thought process?
We have the data on four, five now, because we're gonna head to two, five at the same time. So I know Mervin and his team are working on the logistics around that. So it's more on what our health data is and how, how the staffing is going. So right now, the staffing part piece and the sub-piece are the two hinge points on this one that would allow us to be able to move forward. You would also likely see an adjustment in schedule when we went to four, five, and expand the day from the current day that we're in.
Well, and what, what about the buses? Are we still going to keep those, the buses to the minimum?
Yeah, so that, we're, we're not allowed to, we are at the max that we can do on the buses under current guidelines. So, and, and Mervin, feel free to jump in when I get off, off task or just intervene so I don't go off task. Is.
How are we going to do that?
So you have to make two stops in the same neighborhood, I guess is what you're asking.
So are you going to have kindergarten through fifth grade all in one bus like we used to? In just a smaller area? Or are we going to have the time staggered? Like how are we going to do that with transportation?
Well, right now, what we're looking at is, so we have four, fifth grade data. So we're looking at that to see if we can kind of keep doing what we're doing. One of the concerns that is out there is what we're doing at George Watkins, we're having to leave the George Watkins area and kind of pick those students up and bring them to the middle school and high school. And one of the main reasons why we have to do that is from a logistical standpoint. We just wouldn't have our time to drop the George Watkins students off. And we have to leave the bus for 20 to 25 minutes and then get, you know, rush back down to the middle school and high school to pick those students up. It just, it, it wouldn't work for that. What we are looking at and what Dr. Nichols and I talked about, we may possibly have to look at going to a tiered schedule. When we get to the fourth and fifth grade, or we may look at it once we go to the sixth and seventh grade, going to the middle school. So I think it just really depends on where it puts us as far as the numbers, what, you know, we and what we all are comfortable doing. Once we provide the information, not on any of them.
Well, I'm guessing that we, we're still kind of appealing to public to try to transport their own kids if possible. I would imagine that that helps significantly, because we have had a lot less people utilizing the buses than we have.
It, it does help and we do appreciate families for doing that. But I, I know Mr. Mack and I were talking about what his parent drop-off would be. So it does, when it solves one problem, it creates another one.
So you have 150.
So I don't know if you want to.
155.
So, so K, that's would be K5, right? So K5, you have 155 pickups. So he would essentially have to shift his bus and parent drop-off. The bus lot would become the parent drop-off lot. So shifting the logistics on that, it does, it creates another problem to solve.
Is that, have you found because of the amount of parents that are dropping off and picking up, is that delaying the time? Like instead of, you know, if you're starting at 9:30, does it turn into like 9:40 because of the amount of cars that is taking that long? It's been terrific so far. Parents have been really cooperative, they've actually staggered themselves. They'll, they start at 8:40, which is our preference. We don't want the kids just getting out, because we check temperatures before they get out of the con, things like that. The parent pickup, they stagger more and there are some that come daily at about 1:50, which is absolutely fine with us. Because it, it, you know, lengthens that, spreads them out. And so it's really, it's gone very, very smoothly. 155 with a tiered schedule is going to be scary.
We've talked about a K2 arrival and dismissal time and a 3.5, you know, actually official stagger. But, you know, those are, once again, as kids are coming back and that's, we appreciate the board, I appreciate the board. Allow us to cohort and not go K5, because we're able to figure some of these things out as we bring more kids back.
It's a lot of work. Thank you all for what you're doing.
Have a slide up to it? Oh, there it is. So here's our updated timeline, we're here tonight. With a draft timeline based on updated health metrics. Our six through 12 survey closes on December 16th at 5:00 PM. As of walking in here, we only have about a third of the survey responses. So I know everybody's waiting till the last minute to get those done, please get those in. We want that information before we go on for the holidays, so we can kind of work through that. And provide an update with you to Mr. Mead's question about the next cohorts and next steps. Really trying to see those, that data, because we will have to do a pretty dramatic shift in our schedule.
Did you say what percentage we've gotten back so far?
Got about a third, so we have about 1,800 kids. Six, 12, rough number, we had just over six, 16, six, 17, before I came here. So, but that number is up significantly from when I looked at it in the morning. So I know folks are, we'll do a reminder call tomorrow to let folks know, we'll do another Facebook post as well. Just reminded folks to, to run those down, so. And we did put in there, if you do not complete it, that you will be virtual as a default. But we would love to have your actual input on it. So just spread that word, encourage folks to fill it out. We've had some families ask us questions, we've been returning those phone calls and those emails and working through those individually with families. So cohort three would come before you a little bit later on in the meeting. So be happy to answer any questions or additional concerns or really want to thank the administrators and the teachers for.
I'd like to ask, I guess, Mr. Springs, about Dr. How, now that we're talking about after the Christmas break and probably February and bringing that group back. How, how has the progress made for, for virtual up to this point? And do you see that being a huge shift when you go back to in-person? Or what is your thoughts on that? I guess it's great.
I know it's a little early to tell, but I've been looking at the data from the survey today. I was a little excited to kind of see where my families were at. And right now, it looks like we have a lot of people, even if we chose the pirate option, they're interested in going back and face to face. Which means that we'll have to do some careful planning. There will be some schedule changing, but we're trying to protect who they have as their teacher as much as possible, where we can. We will be excited to welcome everyone back, of course. So first we have to get that data. And then we can kind of make a determination about how our schedule is going to look. Because that will influence the staffing, it will determine, you know, how we're going to do all of the physical heat throughout the building. There's a lot of planning involved once we get that, and that's really the linchpin to our whole planning process right now.
Yeah, I would agree, once we get the data on numbers and who's coming back and who's staying virtual, that sort of drives the machine about what our schedule will look like. Our biggest challenge, I think, we will face in this building is going to be the classes that need to be taught both in-person and virtual. That's going to be a huge, huge challenge, and I think that's what a lot of our teachers are very apprehensive about.
Where you have one foreign language teacher or something like that, and they're expected to do that.
Exactly, that's, 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 that's going to be the difference.
So what is your, what are you thinking on how that would actually be handled? Are they going to try and handle it still as a single class period and have virtual and in-person students?
That, that would be the optimal way to do it. Obviously, with some of the bigger departments, we may be able to dedicate a virtual teacher. Your example is a good example, though, if we only have a foreign language, one foreign language teacher, that's not going to work. So they would have to do some system of synchronous and asynchronous learning for the virtual students.
So, I don't know, I know that the CARES Act funding has to be spent by the end of this month. What if we went and bought televisions, big ones, for the classrooms that would have to do virtual, for them to be able to do the Zoom? Are we, could we connect them through smart TV to be able to do that Zoom?
Oh, like live, like a live classroom?
Yeah, so you've got, yeah, so you've got students here and then you've got the, the big screen there with faces.
So the virtual students are watching the class at the same time that they're teaching.
Because I feel like we could probably get our hands on big TVs before.
We've done some extensive work with monitors, but I'll let Matt and Ross jump in on, on, on your specific question.
Is, is that a possibility?
Not in that timeframe, okay, they're, they're not on shelves. Things like that aren't on shelves. That's about 16, $70,000 dollars pop at a single. And the biggest challenge is going to be that the camera and the audio of the teacher that's teaching a live in-person class and in-person broadcast. There are a couple of ones that they have, but again, we're at a two and a half week window. Those are the things that are going to snap stuff out of bunches of, of other districts as well. So that's a bit of a hard one. There've been a couple of features that I've seen that have used the projector to push that out there. It does make it a little hard to go back and forth when you're, you know, even when you're just doing a full virtual, between what you're looking at and then trying to see the, the big screen to see the, the kids. So it's a, there, there's a couple of pieces that would have to go into place to try and do of both live in-person and a remote class at the same time. And timing would be the, the biggest issue with that is that there's just not, especially for that size and then those, those cameras. There's a couple of ways to deal with what we have, but not.
Yeah.
But it's still lots of stationary stuff.
And camera and audio wise, I mean, structurally, you'd be locking the teacher down for their, for their in-person kids, or you'd lock them down to this because they've got to be on the camera for those students who are at home.
Well, I guess, so what they're doing now is they're using their computers, right? Just like a regular Zoom meeting.
Right.
So the only way they would be able, if they continued in this way, it's almost like their computer is here and then they're teaching to a classroom behind it from.
Yeah, if you're doing both in-person and virtual at the same time.
Which it sounds like you might not have a choice.
Right, yeah, we may run into that.
It sounds like that's going to force our hand almost to a degree, depending on what the students decide. Just because they can't do two things at the same time.
Do you have a, off the top of your head, a number that, I have this many teachers that only can teach, or this many classes that are only taught by one particular teacher? Like how many classes that might be, a dozen?
And Chris is, I'm giving Chris a little bit of think time on that. So.
Thank you. What is it? What's your number?
So the first part, not that he needs it, I was just going to interject at this point. So the first priority would be that, so block one would be, I thought in-person, block two would be virtual. So if you have enough kids, you can make a virtual course and put it in a certain block. So you are teaching virtual and in-person, but you're not doing it at the same time? That would be the first priority. But with those teachers that, the schedules don't work that way, because you only have a finite number of teachers, number of kids and so forth, it would have to be concurrent. Was that long enough, Chris?
Yes, it was, thank you. I phoned a friend while.
Really rough numbers.
We're thinking 15 to 20, because it's going to be all our dual enrollment classes, our AP classes, and then all the classes that are only offered once, are singleton classes. So probably in that 15 to 12.
Well, and is it possible for those classes to remain virtual while other classes are in-person? Are they doing that at some schools?
There are some schools and there are lots of models and, and so I know Mr. Valdriggy went to see Colonial Heights and their in-person piece. And we've talked to some other places, that they're actually doing virtual in-person.
Yeah.
So the kids are coming into this dual enrollment course, but they're on their computers and they have headphones in and the kids at home. So that method does exist and could be an option. I mean, we'd have to explore it and the teacher and so forth, but it's really virtual in-person.
But they're in the building, but they're.
So Hanover has some courses that they do that it's virtual in-person or in-person virtual, I'm not sure which goes first. But so that everybody is learning through the computer, whether you're in the school or.
And the teacher's in the classroom.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah, there are also models where you have a, a parent professional who's in the room with the kids and they're on the computer and then the teacher is somewhere else too. So lots of different variations, it really comes down to kids, schedules, courses and numbers, so. It's intensive.
Well, yeah, because I mean, the stress is going to fall back on the teacher ultimately to say, if they have to do a virtual, like you said, I would say that you got to do a virtual block and do an in-person block, they're like, did I say the same thing? Did I, did I teach the same thing? Did I do it exactly the same way? So as these, as these students start to collaborate, to say, well, I didn't hear him say that, you know, because he didn't say that in person. And I think, like you said, I mean, to try to coordinate that is going to be really challenging, especially for the teachers in an AP or dual enrollment, which is you got to get it right, right?
And as a parent of a high school student, just from the parent perspective, our teachers have really done a great job of engaging and teaching and still covering. Like each take an intro to Colonnade Arts Virtual, that's tough. So, but you know, he's doing a great job and is engaged and same with history, same with, you know, the, the different courses. So our teachers, our administrators, our, our teams are really making the most of it and could be proud of the work they've done. We'll continue to explore solutions and make smart decisions moving forward. I'm good if you guys are good.
Sounds good. So now we are going to vote on the elementary school contract. Do I hear a motion to approve moving forward with the new elementary school contract as presented?
A move we approve moving forward with the new elementary school contract as presented.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I hear a motion to approve the return to learn plan for cohort three, which is grades two and three as presented?
I move that we approve the return to learn plan for cohort three, grades two and three as presented.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next meeting is.
Our next meeting is January 11th, it will be a regular board meeting. Last day of school is Friday, December 18th. I don't think I need to tell any families, kids or staff that, but just a friendly reminder, so.
All right, meeting is adjourned.